Existing building and this is where.
We'll back behind it then, okay? All right.
Behind it.
Something along the north line.
Right, yep.
So that access comes off of 109.
Correct, yes, yep.
Okay.
And if he's worried about water coming off our gravel parking lot or something, we can slide that building, I think it's set back at seven feet from the property line. We'll slide it over ten, twelve feet and make a little bit of water weight so the water doesn't go over there and get into his... Because he's got a hole over there full of appliances and stuff. That he doesn't talk about.
Well, is it full of what, appliances?
Well, you can't see it here, but there's some pilot here here. And there's a hole there that's got appliances and such stuff in it. You don't pass around these.
That's on your.
Yeah, that's on.
His.
In that hole?
Yeah, you can't, I mean, it's full of stuff.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we had a problem with this and so.
So you gotta, you don't dump on the property there, Carol?
No.
What about the.
Yeah, I'm talking about that one stuff that I found here to repeat this last year and have accumulated to be the point area which looks like just all of those properties. I'm sixty-two years old as you say, but I've been pouring the shit out of the ocean that I was talking about. That stuff that I, I'm assuming he's having stuff this way, this, I'm out there, I can't keep, you know, I can't stand what brought up.
All right, we need to move along. Sherri, do you have any thoughts, recommendations, may or may not, or what did you?
I, um, just knowing what I've been reading through it all and paperwork and stuff, that it's really not a concern with keeping this lot pretty busy and kind of included with it. Um, I, I don't know if what the garbage and all that, that doesn't become a zoning issue, that becomes a civil issue, I think. Um, then I, I would recommend that this do get approved into the highway commercial.
Do you think the chair would entertain a motion? Motion by example to approve. Is there a second for that? Haraldson, is there further discussion from the board?
I have something.
Yeah?
If this is permitted, then if he deals, he's got to come back in for a conditional use. Um, correct, according to our ordinance. It's not a permitted use.
Yes, I will visit with, um, Todd about that to make sure that's the right stuff because we do have this building permit right here. Um, so I will visit with Todd and then we will make sure that's what has to happen and we will follow all the rules.
Question, if the building, our business already exists there, the building.
On B.
On that lot. I mean, going forward on the other side, I get that. But the existing lot that already has that business, that's already grandfathered in, would it not be?
So the reason why a question came up is you just changed our zoning ordinance. And so then to have verification to and clarification on it for sure, the way it's written in our new zoning ordinance, I will call Chris, the chief who helps with all of our stuff, and I will make sure that a conditional use if it needs to be, will be done.
Works for me. Want to do it right, and that's why we're here, rather than hook up your bottom.
Well, this is a little Florida's a player that this issue's gonna come back as conditional use if it goes, if that we permit.
All right, when we see that, maybe we'll add a little more precise to it, just the pre-ham, stuff that we have setbacks and whatnot, okay?
Okay. And, um, last that I have.
We need your vote.
Oh, first.
All in favor of a motion, signify by saying a aye. I oppose, say no, promotion carries. All right, second item?
Um, I, thank you, Jeff, for calling in.
Well, and here's the thing, I want to, I want to go on record if after these two water tests, if the water on it has become foul and it's directed because of some kind of issue with storage up there, I want to come before the board again.
I, I think if that situation occurs, it's not a, it's not an issue for us to deal with. It's a civil issue between you and the people who think they're causing the problem.
Here, 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 here's what it is. And if my dad initially made this an issue twice, twice you walk the road, the owners of the property that have to deal with the drink, all of those property owners below that that tree blooms on, if it's been toxified by the previous owners, the current owners have assumed the responsibility before that.
Again, I think, I think it's a civil issue, I think it's a civil issue, it has nothing to do with.
Oh, I, look, that is supposed to be a civil issue. I just wanted to go on the record that twice the board has overridden the local people with concerns about water over. I just spent over a hundred thousand dollars rebuilding my place. And I want to find problems with the runoff that were brought up to this board in ninety-eight, overridden in two thousand four by the same board who's more interested in tax money than the public, and I want her to go on record.
So be it.
Okay, thank you for.
I'd like to see copies of the records sent to me.
All right, thank you for participating. Um, we have other. You're welcome, have a good day.
Thank you.
Bye.
And just reply.
And secondly and lastly, I have to see two applications and I will be setting up interviews for part-time zoning position for, towards the end of this week. That's all, huh?
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Ladies?
I used to do this in the middle of the way, I'm planning the zoning board, I know exactly what you're going through.
Oh, okay.
Will we shut down from streets for Valley Queen? Thanks much.
Sure.
Thanks for coming.
All right, motion to adjourn. All right, thank you. Second, like Jim? All in favor, signify by saying a aye.
Then forty, the forty-one eighth, is he gonna send them out in March, or?
I'm fine. I don't know if we're gonna get it out then, but we're, we're fine. I will put a thing in there to, maybe just throw in that resolution and just say that this is the way it has been and just add everything.
Well, we're gonna enforce the law, it's been on books for twenty-some odd years.
Right.
No, I ordered that in with the application, or with the, I said.
You need a break?
Oh, go ahead. Let me see, wait.
You call an order? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Review of the minutes of our February ninth meeting. Any additional corrections?
I do have a change on the agenda. Dick Pearson will not be coming in at eleven o'clock. Put him in next week.
Called because he was just here, right?
Yeah, he had called, he had texted me last night and wanted to come at nine o'clock and then I knew this was going on and.
Back now.
Oh, but he wants to come in and.
My guys.
Ooh, Jim?
Yeah, well, sure. Just not walk into the other team's office.
Yeah. Motion to approve the minutes in today's agenda. Tom, thank you for your second. Thank, thank you all, favor signify by saying a aye. We will skip over the state's attorney report.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Um, I did receive a quote from the courier yesterday as far as the file came until I haven't had a chance to review it, so I'll get it, not review it and compare it to the one I have with the last week and I'll bring it up again when I'm here next week. Other than that, uh, I don't have anything else this week. I don't believe, um, you guys have any questions for me.
It's working sweet, just let me like.
Okay, guys, thank you, dog, have a good day.
Hey, Jim, sorry we couldn't get to you at nine. We had a little run over on the plane and. You got the door to water?
Okay.
Uh, that's everything, that's.
Last Tuesday, we talked about the radio communications that we're gonna try to get for other departments. And when I told Janessa about it, she indicated that, you know, is there something that we can do with, you know, we got the school buses off the Bravo EM channel, uh, probably six, eight years ago. Robert County Highway Department is on the same channel right now. But we'd like to get some thought to it, see if we can't find our own channel that would work for Robert County Highway Department so that we're not past department's routine non-emergency communication is sometimes overlapping with emergency calls, if it may happen. And, and then they have their own frequency, I think we could eliminate that. Would, um, would help that from, uh, from being a, you know, an ongoing thing. The other thing that may happen once, and I've talked about this before, is the Project Twenty-five, it's a digital communication system. That's radio, and everybody is out there, has a digital frequency. Each radio has its own ID. Should we not do anything there, eventually they're gonna take that non-emergency communication, it's not a fire truck, it's not an ambulance, it's not a law enforcement vehicle, and they'll just turn that frequency off. So to avoid that, we need to, I think, get on the correct side of thinking of some other type of frequency repeater system that would hit them off the emergency channel. So.
Same as what we did with the school bus, but basically.
Right, so before we have, uh, law enforcement, uh, fire trucks throughout the county, school systems, both system and Wilma, county highway, and then Robert County Emergency Management, all on the same frequency. That's a lot of traffic. So you remember back in the day when we took the system, school and Wilma off, we had a bandwidth here. They narrow-banded everything, so there wasn't enough space on that. And so the school moved to get their own frequency along with the Wilma School District. So if we can look toward that possibility with the county highway, you know, it's something that we'd like, I'd like to give some consideration to. I think Janessa maybe later today talked a little bit about the instances that do happen and how we can, can move that out of, off that general.
Man, you're in a good position, you're also on the fire department.
Right.
And, uh, you probably notice some crosstalk over the years, so.
Yep. Especially like, excuse me, Jim said, when we take the buses out, that really a lot, you know, and that's the same thing that's happening with the highway department versus the ambulance. Every time with Chip's field and we got a lot of chat going on in the highway, then I'll send the ambulance, it goes on a run. You know, and my guys are interfering with them and talking over them and it gets bad, you know, we don't try to, and we always remind the guys, you know, when you hear them go on. But like I said, for an example with Jim, you know, maybe they're on break or something, or maybe they're out of the truck. This guy gets in and starts, you know, communicating for whatever reason and then they don't know that ambulance is on a run or something like that. It happens often.
No one realizes.
We've been working at it as best we can right now, but there is a lot of incidents where, like snow, you're doing a lot of stuff with snow, where there's a lot of stuff going on, you know, with whatever. Now the ambulance is out running on their runs in the winter time. For bad weather, whatever, you know, and they're on going to a scene and then you got everybody trying to not talk over each other. That's something that, that happens. As Jim said, you know, there's a possibility of putting a repeater up for ourselves, you know, yet we still can communicate with them, but yet we're not able to do it.
With Pat's radio, he has the ability to take the flip to a different channel to get on the digital system where he can communicate with law enforcement, communicate with emergency management, communicate with whoever. So it's not that we're eliminating what he can do. We're just trying to get the bulk of what's on there to, to be not a, again, I'll go back to saying routine non-emergency communication.
So what's the solution and how expensive is it?
Well, that's the thing we need to look at. I, I talked, I talked to Dennis, I thought, you know, if we could look at October one, you know, like it's sometime, don't jump into it, find out where we're at, uh, what, what the costs are, what other counties are doing, uh, to grant county emergency management. The ambulance call the mill bank repeater, that's just what they call it. We can have a Robert County repeater that would, would then equip their department functioning on a dedicated channel.
I understand, I understand, but are you talking about putting up a tower with a?
Well, I don't think we need to put up a tower, we can probably get on system.
On the same tower we have.
Yes.
We're on the same tower, it just need a, you know, separate deal for the highway.
So right now what happens is it bounces off the summit tower or, you know, and I think we get a better, should get a better reception off the summit tower.
One thing about we get really good reception right now, so that's one thing.
I understand, I have all the answers, you, you talk thousands of dollars or tens of thousands of dollars or?
I don't think so, but, you know, I think you're looking at a repeater that you can get for maybe a couple thousand dollars. We need a couple of them, maybe, you know, there's some install, you know.
Those are, you do some work to the radios as well, or?
No, I think the radios will be fine, they'll just run on analog.
Yeah, we do have all the radios, so that's the problem. I mean, we bought used radios when we had to switch over last time. And we bought the used radios from, um, Mill Bank Communications back then. And then every time we get a vehicle that we have to upgrade, then we buy a radio, but it's ongoing. I think it's all, but like you're saying, mine is the most up. Mine is the only one that can switch, you know, so that communication can be done all the way around, so. The other trucks do sell our channel.
But the sheriff's department, do they, they get, have they got new radios, do they have old radios that would work to?
Well, they may, and then again, now we're looking at getting eight of them, you know, that we, for twenty, twenty twenty, we're requesting eight more for twenty twenty-one. So once those radios become, they can bike those things clean, we could give them to highway and just run them around analog. And this project's gonna be done, I think, in the next two years, so we've got the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, there'll be more radios to try to complete the, the number that we need, that we can, our county vehicles. Uh, city assistance, I think, has plenty of that funding, they can get their own. Uh, it's just those departments that don't have it. Like we need one for the mobile command center, we will need one for northeast ambulance. And we need one for the fire department, so they don't have the resources, and that's a way that we can help them. The new radios gonna be about twenty... I guess around twenty-three hundred dollars.
Well, you're looking for that, the, the city street department uses the same frequency as the ambulance and the fire department?
No, no.
And they do have their own repeater, they'd be like the, the grant money or the mill like repeater, about twenty-five hundred dollars for each repeater. That's not including install. Grant money won't allow it to put install.
So if you have a, you have a base station in your office right now, but when, when you, when you talk to a, a vehicle out in the field, where does that signal go to?
It goes off the repeater we have right now, that's.
Is that at the sheriff's department, or is that inside?
Sheriff's department and ours is all on the same one. But they have another channel that the sheriff has where we don't hear them. But they hear us. See, they switch it up there, we're not directly on the sheriff department, you know, we're on, oh, AM, which is Robert County, but, um, they can switch over to us and talk back and forth, but we don't switch over to the deputies. See, we don't hear the deputies, we do hear this man. But we don't hear the deputies and the highway patrol, see, they have their own frequency, their own channels, I should say. But we're all worn off the same repeater, so it can be split. And yes, I have one that's in the shop base that we talk, and then I have one in the office and then every, all the vehicles. When they call the shop, Jim's in the shop and they, you know, they run it down. He has a radio in the shop that he goes to the top back and forth when somebody's broke down, let's say, and he calls the shop. So we do have that one radio up there.
The other questions, Jim?
Okay, so Jim and I were talking, Vince, you're having this meeting with communications. Excuse me, our generator, backup generator is supposed to be running once a week and going on for emergencies, the same one you have at the courthouse, same one at the firehouse. Richard, I had all these upgrades and all, but this program can't. And ours is shot, we've been trying to keep it running, it can't, it don't run, don't have anything for backup anymore. And this gets really expensive to put a new generator in, you know, get it hooked up, put it back in the pound, get it hooked up so it runs once a week, you know, and all that kind of stuff. And Jim and I were talking, like the same one at the courthouse, same one at the firehouse. If we could get Jim to start working for some kind of grant money that could be available later, but he said that was already up for this.
This grant cycle, with that funding that we think, that we think that may, may be able to fund it, but there's always grant opportunities that come up, you know. So we're always, we're always looking for those. In, in the shop he's talking about, the power goes out and they can't open their big doors, that's something that's, that's an emergency. You know, they need to get out, plow, do whatever.
Keep the heat on while you're out.
He'll always be diesel generator type.
We prefer propane.
We have one that's up to propane, so it's battery operated, have propane, but ours is old and shot, we can't keep it running anymore. And I keep forgetting about bringing that up every, this last week.
So what's that thing is, I mean, fifty or something, it's huge, I told you, right?
Well, it's, this one is actually a smaller one and we need to upgrade it and get it bigger, have a bigger one.
He's probably want a thirty K.
Want to be able to run the, the lights and get the doors open. And, not the lights so much, but, uh, get the, keep the heat on and keep, so we get the doors open, you know, on emergency, and that's either in the summer or winter. Most in the winter just because the heat has to run, but um, that's something I kept forgetting to bring up, it's, it hasn't been working. Tried to get it running last year again, putting batteries in it, tried here, run it, it's just ongoing, it just is now.
Or with the colder having right now, that's stretching from Canada to Texas, I mean, there's a rolling black out brown house that may happen, you know, there's always instances of need.
You get an ice storm, or you know, suddenly you gotta get on an ice storm and, you know, power's all, you always have that. But if we talk about that, we can start working on something, get some money for that. See, that's gonna be pretty expensive.
Yeah, one that big, would we?
I could have twenty-two KW in two years ago, I could have about seven thousand dollars off complete.
Okay, so.
If you talk to thirty, that's just a gin rack.
That's why we were talking ten thousand dollar market, more or less, you know, and something like that.
You're not running the entire building, you just wanna open up to the essentials, the doors, the, you know, you know, those things.
As much as we can without doing overboard, you know, so. Anyway, we did discuss that, and that's something we gotta keep in our minds for future purposes, so.
Couple, couple years ago, we had an Otter Tail representative here and that was part of the, part of the priorities when, when you do have the power outages and we had the bad ice storm and we had the hell power, he was very much aware of it, our tiger department would be the priority. Restore power back up there, so.
I think the generator that's, that's over here will run the furnaces to the courthouse and a couple outlets, you know, I think that's what you need it for.
If you had any extent, like, you had fourteen days of no power. You know, usually around here in the Otter Tail, it's not gonna be quite as bad, but when you have the rural area, they can be off for two weeks and no problem at all. Where maybe here we don't, but you know, possibly a few days to a week, you know. Yeah, worst scenario, could be worse.
You want the generator, ten days, maybe a little five K heavy, went out there shit every four hours dumping gas and.
You, you want a standalone and you want the tank that's dedicated just for the.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Comes out automatically and.
Well, like the jail has the big diesel cat engine, you know, and that's, that runs off.
Yeah, that thing's really young.
And that's huge, so, but that's just.
Maybe run a wire in the road.
Well, yeah.
Just run it over the road, just put you need it.
It does not be too elaborate for us, but it does have to be up to you, that's for sure, so.
I wouldn't doubt we should upgrade it a lot here too, I mean, that's, those things have gotta be twenty years old.
Oh, they're older than anything, yeah. So, that's high up.
So I guess, thanks for the work, with the radio stuff, I think, Dennis and I talked, I'd like to look at October one, you know, to see if that's a feasible timeframe to look at some way to move this forward.
I think that's realistic.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you, very good.
Hey, you wanna do this though?
I do.
I have a report, so.
Yeah, I don't have a lot, so, it'd be great, it gets bigger, huh?
Kinda nice working off in the north of the hard weather and stuff, isn't it?
Yeah.
And I need the three minute breaks and maybe.
Yeah, you, you watch out.
You just got work next. Yeah, they run in this cold weather?
Just to pick up when the guys go on, they ain't running too much.
Yeah.
Oh, we've been so fortunate with the snow.
Yeah.
Nice rain. Scary that it's going around us all, this, I think it's gonna be, I got a feeling we're gonna be having a cyclone.
Yeah, I think it's, it's been a long time since they had a cyclone, I think.
Well, I think we're going on our ten years of dry cycle starting right now.
Yeah, I think you're right, I mean, I'm no fan of snow either, but it's, when you, the weather pattern doesn't give you any snow, it likely not gonna give you any rain either, I think so.
Right, yeah, I think, you know, we'll always get rain at the right time anyway.
Yeah.
We can get that, that's amazing.
Well, sure, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I don't know how many times I thought about that damn generator and actually forget.
Boy, I tell you, that one I had, that, that one winter, it's like, you know, you wake yourself in the middle of the night, put their total gas tank, you're supposed to shut it off, but you don't wanna shut it off because then you put the power out, so you're afraid it's, you're gonna spill a little and it'll blow up in your face and.
Right.
After that, I said, no, that's it, I'm gonna get it off.
I thought about doing that too at home, I mean, we got Otter Tail though, and it seemed like the worst we were ever, although it wasn't that long in town, you know. I'm in Otter Tail, I'm out of town, but I still on Otter Tail, so. Been pretty fortunate, but.
Yeah, we got a wet stone, and we, we've had some problems over years, I mean, it's, it's not been bad, but.
Well, that last time I went here, uh, my, my in-laws up in Victor, you know, they were all for fourteen days, I mean, you know, you go up there and no one's, a stretch there and over north or west where all the pools went down that other year.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't get those down overnight, it's a long time.
Well, especially if you had a problem now where you got all this stuff going on throughout the whole United States and those other.
Right.
Team will come in and help you, well, they're all south.
There's no way you're gonna get people to come all of a sudden back here, you know. Yeah, that's the worst scenario right now, and look at all them people. There's millions or hundreds of thousands of people out in the hall right now down there, so.
Yeah, well, some pictures of like Houston, Houston, if you've ever been on it, it's hot and humid, it's, it's a god awful, and they had snow on the ground and depending what their temperatures were, but it was chilly, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's been a hundred years since they even had this much snow.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, it's.
But warming up next week, right?
Yeah, yeah, it could.
In the thirties and forties, I'm sure.
Start lining up to start practicing on next week, so.
Congratulations on, you're gonna be a grandma again.
Was that right?
No, not for a little while yet, but. Well, my daughter's gonna be having another baby, she's at, I'm the boy now, it's three weeks, so she's gonna have another baby boy.
Oh.
Sounds like by June or sometime, or by June or June. Pretty crazy, is it?
Was that right?
Yeah, those, those other ones I had, I'm, I was, before I knew about, about the month of my orders, I had emailed Grant and just asked him if he had any moving, or whatever he had up there, so. Anyway, so then I got this, right after I got the month of my orders from Dennis. Just so you guys are aware.
We, we have this one on board, is that what, is new?
Yep.
So what, yeah. So, we had, did you save all of my gear?
We just gotta go get it.
Well, you just, well, we gotta go get it, you got it all right there?
The idea that, uh.
You go get them, yeah.
I, Dennis had said he had talked to him about delivering, but it kinda sounds like, wasn't it possible?
I, we, I, we need to try and talk to him and bring it to Aberdeen, because I mean, it's hard way or something, but, I don't know if he's got that, nothing yet.
Mine has a hundred thirty thousand and a new tranny.
What's that, your pickup? That's the newest one?
Yeah.
What's that, say, yes?
There was some.
Two thousand fifteen.
There was some pickups on that state bid that we had, um.
They're going to replace mine.
There was one that was on all the state bid, it was on Indian.
It's all on the state.
There were some pickups on there, and those prices are good, through September.
Another area, September. Yeah, mine's basically thirty thousand. Pretty reasonable, when you get out of state bid versus, uh, park and all.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess I got something new this afternoon, and I'll be here.
Yep.
Better than this. Equal to see.
Did you mention that?
No, I just kind of sees things about the, the car.
Oh. So. I have, uh, I'd like to turn up a resolution for you to sign again to update. Um, we're gonna be putting road restrictions on Monday, March first, to road weight, uh, weight limits. And what we normally do is have you guys make a motion to do the resolution and sign it. Today's date, and, uh, sign this resolution to send back to the, we request the South Dakota Highway Patrol to help us assist. And so what this resolution does is we send this to the state highway patrol sergeant in our area, and then he will make the right corrections, and have guys kinda help us patrol it. And so what I do is I send this request to him with this letter, and then if you guys wanna make, uh, more, uh, motion or sign that resolution, we can go ahead and go forward with that.
It's an official spring's on the horizon.
Well, yeah, it's not too far away. It seems weird you even don't buy it.
It's eighteen below zero, right?
Don't worry, it gets going fast, and the weather's right, forty-nine, it's gonna be here.
Do you know what number needs to be signed to this?
I don't know the top of my head, so.
There's some prop thieves out there, isn't there? They call it, called the Ross, they're about five months, oh, you go airborne.
Yeah, we got quite a few red flags out, but, uh, trying to do it. A lot of people don't see that, really look at them, and then you run right over them. We put gravel in, I counted like four, I don't know, I don't know, because they get pretty huge, and we already got gravel, we tried to break up in the common yard, and then we both gone. And if there's none of that, I'll have to go back, and I can try to put some gravel in there for a tacky saw, I'll have to look at that one again.
I don't know how they can get that road belt busted because of the, that.
Unbelievable, you know, and then when it gets nice, it's just.
Yeah, I know, I, I've never seen one, probably gets a little bit there, but I've never seen it this bad.
Yeah, this year it works.
Yeah, I know, it does.
We need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash four seven, which creates a road restrictions effective March first. A motion by phase second by Don, any further discussion, all in favor, or signify by saying no. All right, motion carries.
That's, uh, that's all I have today, um. Where is that going? Good sleep, uh, Jim, you have got a hold me.
All right.
So now we'll just, uh, make copies down, when they're done signing that, and, uh, I'll just get a copy from you right now, and then I'll call you later on. I don't wanna know who's ahead of the sergeant, or who's sergeant out in the area. They got a new sergeant last year, I think, for our area, so, like, it used to be Val and Val, Val and Tyler, so. Or something, or went somewhere else, or something, so, we'll get ahold of the sergeant again, and then make it official, and then when it comes time, then they'll be around to help us. All right, thank you.
I don't really think that.
Do you wanna leave a copy by?
Sure, okay, all right.
Kerry, who's this design electronics?
Right, somebody down here.
Is that what?
That's the company designing that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All right, I'm curious.
The, uh, three flats that, we review this, zoning. For senior chair, we need a motion to approve. Your second, okay, thank you. Any discussion on the flats? Don is looking for a motion to approve that twenty twenty Malibu, eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars, twenty twenty. Manufacturer's warranty, three year, six thousand, and I think the drive period is extended. Dan Lamb also commented, he thought that maybe the warranty would extend a little bit further, but, but the regular retail consumer would get, they mentioned, I don't know, the, also. I guess we'll find that out any time, Tom. A motion to approve the purchase of that, Tom, thank you. Do you have a second to that? Tom, is there any other discussion on that?
Kerry, what does the new destination charge?
That, um, I mean, I'm done with that, um.
I'll play it over you.
Yeah.
All right. One second.
It's ready to go, he said, just give me a big notice and I'll have it in the shop warmed up, ready to go. Said typically, uh, in, um, purchase, I would fill the tank with gas, but he says I've taken all the meat off of the, this deal, so. He said, you better bring a tank, you better bring a gas can or a truck. I don't, I don't know, but.
How, how long did I come, how long?
It's two weeks out there, it's just about to the river. We can tell you a day, why?
I think it's a way about forty miles north of here. About eighty-three, it's perfect.
He's been through this a lot, I can't remember where I was going, or why I drove through that town, but.
Oh, there's one maybe four hundred. What's that?
So, we, we are, you think we can get a little closer, or do we have to go that far?
I don't know, we have to go get it, I would imagine he's got everything standing out, but he can, so he's probably not good.
Yeah, I can make myself available, probably not this week, but.
Now, from there, it's, uh, three hours and thirty-eight minutes.
Okay, so we're going to solve any of these.
You can go that way. This shows that it's just a little bit shorter, but hardly anywhere, you go down through, south of Aberdeen, Moleffe, and what have you. Through the Crocker, through the Crocker bells. And there's plenty of people going up here with, uh, legislative section, and community principals having their transit days today. I mean, there's ways to get there if we wanna put it off, but, um, it's a little bit harder.
Depending on the day, I like to say. Whether Friday, or Monday.
I'll go with you.
Why do you navigate?
We weren't getting any other pickups on.
We gotta be back the same day. Tim wants four and eight expenses.
And meals, huh?
No, Tim.
Are you stopping in Aberdeen, or what do you, what do you want to do? I don't think we have all in favor of the motion, signify by saying no.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I, I sent this out to you after the meeting last Tuesday about, we, we had two employees, county employees that had the COVID vaccine, they had a reaction, where they had this, the second vaccine, so they had to take a day, or one of them was. Is that something that we wanna kind of set our policy? Because as we start getting vaccinated, some people have a reaction, um, some people don't. But do we wanna set something where those employees, I mean, if they're doing the vaccine, that's a benefit for the colony, while, isn't that what sick time is for?
Well, I think, you know, there was this, you know, if they, we're hoping they had a correction that you had to give them up two weeks of additional sick time because of COVID, I would think that would fall under that criteria myself.
I would think they shouldn't have to use their, their old sick time. I mean, they are doing it for the benefit of, of us, you know.
And you said that you couldn't probably wait the next day, right, and then, well, it'd be pretty. Your second, you had it, the next one's second, I think that's quite common.
So is, is that something that we can kind of make a, hopefully I have to set it in policy, or just kind of?
Well, there must be some written guidelines that we have already, with, say, if you, uh, contract the virus and you're allowed time off, is there some narrative that moves with that?
Well, I can look at that.
Related to the illness, and if it was vaccination, that, I feel a whole bunch of people move with that, but.
Okay.
The fourth one, that, we're prepping, nobody.
Looked that far down the road.
Well, we didn't learn to wear that, we were getting a vaccine, and that's, and we're probably making recovery or something, so.
I guess my only concern is not suggesting any of our employees do this. All of a sudden, everybody gets sick for two days after they get the vaccine, but, uh, that's my biggest concern.
I, I really don't.
We saw, we saw that downstairs, remember when they had to send some people home? One didn't do it all of a sudden.
Maybe eleven, one day?
Yeah, I, I, if you want, I was kind of defensive of the whole deal, but I just, I just hate to.
It's just something I think you guys should consider, because I feel if people take the initiative to go and get the vaccine when it is available, that, you know, if they end up getting sick and not feeling well, you know.
I'm kind of curious, do we have some eighty-year-old employees that got vaccinated, or how, how would we get an employee that got vaccinated?
We have two working at the nurse's station that are essential workers that got vaccinated.
Oh, up at the county hall?
Community office.
Okay.
And that's where this first started, and Jay's already been, had his second vaccine. Who, and he was under, because he works at the funeral home, so they're essential.
Oh, did he tell you?
So.
Is he, is he had his second?
Yes, I think he had reaction at the dinner tonight, but I believe he came to work, didn't he?
He did, he said he was really tired until about three o'clock that, that afternoon. I mean, everybody's affected, just like when you get the COVID. How come some people don't have any symptoms, and some healthy person ends up in hospital?
Got a little reaction the first time out. It wasn't the same, but, no, I bet you it felt a little wonky, you know.
It didn't even, it didn't even, I got one on Thursday, didn't even get a sore arm.
I only, I did, I think, I did got a sore, I did my workshop, and I think you just have to get a muscle, you know.
Cause they shoot it, I'm sure.
Just have to do a spot work.
I know, Dwayne said his, his arm didn't bother him unless he was pressed on it.
If I raise my arm above my head, then I feel it, I'll work.
I need to tell you that, wait, wait a second. Yes, it is.
Yeah.
And then I also, I will advertise this in the paper next week. I got a transfer of, um, of the malt beverage and the wine license out in Dakota Crossing from the Buchy Pools that will be taking over.
Uh, that pronounced Bowie.
Okay, Bowie, okay.
What's running, the, the running of the whole Buchy?
Well, apparently, being they called and asked for a transfer of the, of the licenses.
And see something on Facebook, and then I just happened to listen, and I thought, maybe the guy was standing in front of the produce department, I thought, well, maybe they, hired someone to come in and just run the produce department, but it's the whole, whole, whole game, huh?
I don't know any particulars, I don't think there's been any sale of the building or anything like that, I don't know that's happening, but. I just thought, when they called for that part of it, and maybe, maybe someone else knows more than I do.
At least I haven't seen any newspaper.
They did run an ad in the paper this week, looking for everybody.
Oh, yeah, so I see it on Facebook, they're looking for employees, so.
Yeah, in the paper, too.
Okay. What the hell on you? Yeah, but, the four H, oh, yeah. I had a text message from Jill, if we had had a chance to review that, and there are any comments from the board.
Let's get it signed and move on.
I have a couple things, I'm talking about the four H.
Yeah.
Well, the, the, essentially, the reason, is this not between the four H leaders and, and who's gonna run from that? Well, the, the, essentially the lease agreement, is this not between the four H leaders and whoever's gonna rent from them?
Right.
So, the lease dated this, by emptying Robins County four H leaders and the county of Roberts, I don't know that we need to be in there.
That's back up, who we want.
And then, where it says turn and rent to owner gives, which we do by SOR. Cause we're leasing it to the four H leaders, there's something to that.
Here on the center, central leasing agreement.
The four H community center lease agreement.
Okay.
Can you just straight that out?
Wait, and I'll give you, and then under number two, it's just a typo, because we must receive, the insurance information must be received. If it just leave, we must receive, just start with, insurance information must be received thirty days prior, which is the typo. Further than that, a couple pages talks about indemnity, and it means four H leaders and Roberts County, and I think that's okay because it should hold on this, but the lease agreement is really between the four H leaders and whoever the leasing could not Robert County, real estate.
I think Katie is.
Taylor said you'll be here at ten.
And I think Mark, Mark has gone to go to the official workshop, the same as I did. What do you guys think? They're having a thing about tax, tax, do you say that? Tax differences. So I called the motel and they stuck me in another room. Uh, seven, seventeen to eighteen. Oh, okay, yours is on the eleventh or?
My second one's on the second, second child is on the second one.
Oh, the second one?
So I think it'll be a couple weeks after.
Queens will be on, and Don's will be on the eleventh. The South Dakota Retirement is doing a rule change too, like Kate talked about that three months after you, that you cannot work or if you do, you lose some of your retirement. By April first, all employer units must begin reporting to South Dakota Retirement the number of hours worked for those retirees who returned to work and are expected to work less than twelve hundred fifty hours. So that's just something on our end, we'll have to watch. They come back, you know, and help.
Yeah, I agree. You said, Dan, you said that they're waiting for them?
No, no, we just have to report, we just have to report them on, on the number of hours. And if they have the emergency clause, I think that's going to go into effect before, up this year.
Boom.
That's where I got it from. Yeah, most on that chief.
What's that?
This thing? Yeah, we should just take a few minutes and. Get those edits.
So do you want that, county of Roberts, you don't want that?
Not at the top, I think, because we're pretty much, we're four H leaders and then it should say, add less owner, it says owner, and then.
Okay.
And then under number one, where it says turns and rent.
Less or.
Less or gives. Number two, I think we can just strike that we must receive that because it's done this in there twice.
Right.
And then I think going out, you know, on the very last page, there. So it says owner, it says owner should say less or.
Is it scratched in three?
Well, I was thinking about whether we should be named, but I think we should be named as. We're talking about. Yeah, three, I don't, I kind of question that one.
Oh, now C under three?
Yeah, I think, but I think that's okay because it's, that's gonna name us as a.
On under eight, is it?
Right, and that's.
It's a covered edition, possibly.
Right, when they're talking about pulling his harness from some, I think it's okay to have Roberts County listed there, even though we're not.
Sure, yes.
Same thing under E. Hang on. I, I kind of want to make the protectors, but we're not actually involved in the licensing, but so. That was, no time to have it. Well, that's not a controlling issue.
Everybody with the revised edition? You can knock it on the papers.
I, we admire everyone's. Since there's two or three weeks.
You know what we were talking about?
The new, the repeater, and perhaps new radio system or generator, that I think we should consider taking out of this COVID one that we have. Just come out of the regular budgets or?
Well, I think they're going to pursue grants, you know.
Well, yeah, but assuming like the repeater, I don't know if we get all the money in detail or the installation on that, but the generator, I don't again.
We should definitely do that.
It'd be nice if electric company could back this in.
Yeah, the last I heard, I sent an email. And I'm sending it to that Andrew Wigan from Michael's Energy. I sent it out on February eighth. He said, I'm having trouble retrieving costs from the vendors, so it's been delayed a while. Much of the rest of the report is ready to go. Plan is to send it to Otter Tail late this week, since they want to review it as well and may have me change a few things for their programs. But I know he's been having trouble with the electricians. Working with two, two vendors in our area, he said.
They reach out further.
I hear that, Wayne, like, picked it out of his, now, or Wayne's business or?
They're, they're on, oh.
Did he, did some work for us at the jail, did he relapse himself for us a couple of years ago? Did he get, where did he do out to jail? Thought he relapsed, was it parking lot maybe or?
Yeah, yeah, he did.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
I think he's working for the city, is that correct?
So then like a family business for a couple generations, is the dad involved in it? Is there a sister too that?
Brenda.
Yeah, I think he bought, he bought a cheap for.
Yeah, I, I see they're building.
I attended a Cracker Beer Association, they had. We had one representative there. Tammy St. John is still recovering from coronavirus. And Michael Roar, that's all, Dr. Keen, he had a reason why he didn't show up, but. So Jennifer Pegg was the, was the only representative that was there. And she spoke about a number of bills that were going through either committee or the House side or the Senate side. And it took, I suppose, about an hour and a half. Steve McClary was the moderator, so between the two of them, there was discussion that took place on various bills. I didn't, I didn't really have anything that I had a real passion on any of the bills, so I guess I didn't really think much, but. I thought that I need to make myself available to the public for one thing, to talk about what was on the front page of last week's courier. And oddly enough, I did not have one phone call the entire weekend. I didn't have anybody at the meeting come up to me and ask me about. Which you did get a copy of the news article that was published in the Aberdeen American News. And I thought they gave a pretty good, unbiased, and for South Dakota Supreme Court partially upheld, partially reversed circuit court decision with respect to property tax appeal on Roberts County.
That same article through the bar.
That, that showed up in the article. So I guess I was, I was prepared with the twenty-four pages of the Supreme Court decision on that one. And if anybody found out, I would have questions on it, I, I was there to answer. Nothing, nothing was brought forward, so.
It's kind of like old news.
Janice, do you want me to put that, that thing on the docket for next week or are you guys open with anything?
I think we've circulated the agreement, it's done, so we're, we're good with that. I don't know if you want formal action on, on that or, you know, then circulated the response, so. I think we have an agreement with the president, you make the edits.
I know Janice is on her way to, she's not waiting for the ball.
Whatever you want me to do, do you want me to, do you want to do it today with the revisions or do you want it done after the?
Okay, do you need me to sign it? Just make the revisions and I'll sort of come up with it.
No, this is that MOU.
Oh, that's separate from your lease agreement?
Yeah.
I'll know the.
I mean, do you guys want to do that? And then they'll hit that.
Four thousand dollars.
That way we can move forward with it. I don't know how you want to handle that.
Well, I, I don't have anything very urgent, I just want a couple things, I was just gonna bring up, we're at the, we're at forty-six inmates right now. I did talk with Chad, with our insurance on that vehicle, and they're gonna send us a check for that wrecked vehicle, and then I also got, he gave me two salvage companies that are in the Aberdeen area that he typically uses for when they salvage vehicles out. That he thought we could probably still get somewhere between two and three thousand dollars for that, for that wrecked vehicle, so we might end up with somewhere between ten and eleven thousand dollars, which is. Couldn't be a lot worse.
You can't give up on the idea of fixing it at all, if anything.
Well, I, I asked Dan, I went after the meeting last week, I went and talked to Dan at, at the body shop. And he said that the frame was bent, um, like six or seven inches. Uh, but then when I talked to Chad about it, Chad said that the reason, he said, I didn't think it was bent that bad. He said that I know the issue that Dan was gonna have is that Dan doesn't have a frame, a frame.
Break in the tree?
Yeah, yeah, so he said it was, it'd be one of those deals where, once he started fixing it, he'd, Dan would have to tow it to another shop, get it fixed, get that frame fixed and then brought back, so, um, I'm gonna talk to, uh, I might talk to another body shop and just see kind of what they think, as far as what it would maybe cost just to get it operational, if it was something that could still be used.
Back to Willmont people?
Yeah, yeah, to, to their, see what, see what they think. So if it's something, if it's something that they can bend the frame, if they think they can bend the frame back and we can still get a usage out of it for a while, um, we'll go with it that way, so. But that's, that's all I, one other thing that I have, I guess, is that we're in the process of looking for some carpeting to get our classroom in the jailside carpeted. Because we're trying to start using the DDM system for corp. And the acoustics in that room are really difficult, and that's why the judges haven't liked using our DDM system. So I'm hoping to have that room up and going by, by next month. And that'll be useful not only for us, but also for the, the other agencies that utilize us. Walworth had an incident a couple of weeks ago where they drove down, they drove all the way here for three inmates. They got fifteen miles from home and the judge didn't want to wait any longer and canceled their court. They drove them all the way back. Mulbridge. Yeah, so, so it's, you know, it's just gonna be, it'll eventually just be another one of those services that we can provide right from our, from our agency or these, these other counties that are utilizing our jail won't have to bring people all the way to court, in most instances anyways.
They've got a lot of money.
Perfectly, yeah, 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 so. Uh, but I guess one other thing that I should maybe bring up is I did get a call from Brookings County last week. I haven't heard back from them, but they're looking at coming up and touring our jail. They're building a jail that is gonna be very similar to ours. So they asked about coming up and touring our facility. Something like they were going to do about a seventy-eight bed facility with, um, with double, uh, double stacked jail pods, kind of like ours, so they're going to be coming up to visit at some point. But I haven't heard back from them on that.
In addition to deals, I just read in the short, I were at the tribe's process of putting together specs on a jail, twenty-five bed jail. They hope to have that completed here by, by spring, I guess, but I thought it went off the bids on it, yet this, yet this year, so. I don't know when that means, we did have jail by this time next year, I don't know.
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
It's been riding on for a long time.
It has.
They have full funding, they only got like four point five billion early on.
Yeah, and it's, um, just from what I've read, yeah, I read the show as well and I've been reading it for the last couple of years. And I know where it started and where it's, where it's getting to now has been two drastically different things. You have a presidential administration that changed his hands in that time too and, and and funds change and then COVID now too. Uh, so I'm not, I haven't heard any, anything from any of the from anybody out there or anything is going to be being built, so. But, um, but it will, it will help them. And it would, it would decrease some of the stress on our, on our facility. I know they, I know the income is, the income is nice. But it does, it does provide a fair amount of stress for us to have to you know, and that's probably fifteen to twenty inmates. And that's, that can be fifteen people that are having to do doctor's appointments, dentist appointments, counseling appointments and things like that, so. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I've got a couple of things. Yeah.
I, I appreciate just the oral report of forty-six inmates, but I'd like to
You want that? Okay.
I don't, I don't need a printout, I'm all for saving paper because it just stands up right there anyway. But, um, I'd like to know juvenile, uh, tribal holds.
Gotcha.
And, uh, holds for others, whether it be whoever. All right, I started writing the room.
We don't have, we aren't housing any juveniles right now. But we had one that was with us for about two weeks and we brought her to her treatment facility about a week ago.
Oh, one other thing, did you get a chance to call the mayor and tell him?
I, I didn't get a chance to talk to him yet. I'll set it up this week, yeah.
And one last thing is that I know that you transport inmates to the dental office, but is it on an emergency basis, citizen routine cleanings and that sort of thing, does it, or what's, what's that policy there?
It's, a lot of it is set up through the nurse on, it, it, on an emergency basis. Yeah, we're not necessarily doing routine cleans. Um, more often than anything, it's either an emergency or, um, US Marshal service. So.
For the marshal service, sometimes organizers.
Yeah.
And then we have to accommodate the transport for that.
Okay.
Okay, answers everything, Mike?
Um, I have a change that I would come in, I'd talk to Jim Gibson a little bit about the situation with the Robo-AM channel. He just kind of wanted me to explain how this, that sees it from our side. I do see more often than not, especially during day hours, you know, there's that conflict with being able to actually communicate, you have a fire going on or an ambulance and you're kind of fighting for you know, radio time and they have a very important job too and they have to communicate and it's just kind of that conflict that we seem to be having. Um, I definitely think that's a huge thing that we should do is try to get them off of that and get them their own, their own. I wish we had that a little bit before, I probably could have got that on that last grant cycle, but we can start looking a little bit there too and see if that's something we can get something squeezed into a grant somewhere. Because I'm sure it's going to be pretty costly and get that set up and, but. And then we will have those extra radios. I believe there's four, five or six of the Motorola that should work for their analog. It'll be phased out with the P twenty-five compatible ones that we have back in our IT room. But those will still be, I think they're XTL fifteen hundreds for Motorola and those will still work fine for analog channels, so we can start going to get those transitioned out. Um, and then the only other thing, I don't know if we want to do an update maybe on executive session on personnel. We've got the medical situation and then a little bit of the transition.
We can talk about that. Motion for executive session to discuss personnel, motion by Carlson, signify sample. All these papers signify the saying, aye.
Aye.
motion, no motion carries.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift for all your pond needs. Countryside aid, assisted living and memory care in Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton, to use our online banking to save you time. Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs, water softeners and reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.
Pretty soon we'll have a member. I agree with the energy motion on gas. Who operates my signature on it on behalf of Robert's home. I'll fill me a table. Thanks, Tom. Get a chance to go and do it. There's seconds now. Tim. I would favor that one too, if I was saying.
Thank you, they'll be happy to finally come in. I'm not sure.
It's been a long time, isn't it?
Yeah. Speak of the devil.
Bringing my eggs. Bringing my eggs and children's books from my grand, grand niece.
I serve these books too.
We could do bicycle. Frozen. These documents have been circulated, they're letters regards to, we get the survey on security and the cancellation of the people, that was before my time, the cancellation of the people. How are we doing?
This is awesome. I'm like, how did they know me?
Bills is what I have left. What else? Everything's on bills. How about, how about the rest of the board?
You got some, you want to talk? You want to leave?
Motion by sample to pay claims, is there a second to that?
We're going to have to ask behind his other man, right?
The discussion on the bills, all in favor of signify the saying, aye. Here's, those are paid.
If anybody puts together something, I'm shaking this car, if you need some help, you can call.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll certainly do it when I see.
You're available Friday and Monday so far.
Oh, yeah, and Tuesday next week. Oh, you're forced to say it by next week, I think.
Yeah, I think we all get pretty interested in the ban.
Yeah. Let's wait for the weather to warm up, we'd be burnt out, huh?
Breakfast in one place and then that line?
I guess you're not getting that better.
Brunch.
Brunch.
General, get a long extension card.
Just buy anything that's easy.
That'll work. Okay. Get that organized. Is there a motion to adjourn? The movement, uh, is there a second for that? Pay, all in favor of adjourn, signify the so by.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift for all your pond needs. Countryside aid, assisted living, memory care in Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton, to use our online banking to save you time. Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs, water softeners and reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.